Tuesday, March 18. Welcome everyone to our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. And we go ahead and start the meeting with the invocation by Pastor Paul Park.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for gathering us here as a community. Leaders, as they speak and discuss the matters of our community, the matters of our people, Lord, and give them wisdom, give them peace, give them the knowledge that they need, so they can lead and serve this wonderful community that we live in. Father, we just thank you for the community that is here, who care, who worry, who lament, but also praise the great things that are happening here in this city as well. So Father, we welcome you here to give us the right decisions, the right words to say to move forward in unity and in peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you Pastor Park. And followed, following by salute to the flag, Councilmember Grandis.
Thank you Mayor. As we stand before our flag, I'm reminded of the values that make our nation strong: freedom, unity, and sacrifice. Let's honor those who have defended our nation by proudly saying our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, once again, welcome everyone. Mr. City Attorney, is there any reporting, any closed session items?
We had no closed session items today, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, Mr. City Clerk, is there any supplemental communications?
We have none.
Okay, thank you sir. City Manager, would you please give your update?
We do need to do roll call.
That's right. I forgot. My apologies. Mr. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Constantine?
Here.
Councilmember Grandis?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Keneen?
Here.
Mayor Chair Bowie?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you.
City Manager, would you please give the update, please?
Yes, Mayor and City Council wanted to share with the community that Assemblymentary Task Office is hosting Securing Our Water Future, a community update on California water challenges and solution on Friday, March 21st from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Orange County Water District, 18700 Ward Street in Fountain Valley, California. And also on Wednesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM here in the Council Chamber at 10200 Slater Avenue, the Planning Department will hold a public hearing on two items. One is a conditional use permit for 1931M16121 Booker Street. It's a C Restaurant petition submitted by Hot Pot Restaurant to modify an existing CUP to add a type 47 general eating place ABC license for the existing Hot Pot Restaurant located at 16121 Booker Street. And also another item to appeal of a special use permit at 9937 Astor Circle. And so if you're interested in attending the Plan Commission, please join us here on March 26th at 6:00 PM. There is a strategic planning session on March 27th. The strategic plan session is open to the public and will be at the Fountain Valley Recreation Center on March 27th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Also, last but not least, now open I Can Barbecue Karine Grill at the former Corner Bakery location. So if you're looking for an additional restaurant to support our local business, please support them as they all will come in our community. Thank you so much, Mayor.
All right, thank you so much, City Manager, for your update. As for the Mayor's message, I just have a few. So there's a Mix and Mingle Wednesday, March 19th from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in partnership with the Huntington Beach Chamber and the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. So if you'd like more information, please reach out to the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce. And on April 3rd...
Where's the, where's the mixer gonna be?
It's going to be at the Masala Cuisine in India. And that is on, I have an address here actually. Let's stop bringing my glasses. 1803 Beach Boulevard in Huntington Beach. All right. And on April 3rd, right here at the Recreation Center, we'll be having a sober living and group home town hall meeting. So I encourage for those who are interested to be a tenant in persons, we're going to have some special guest speaker from other elected official city, including ourselves, some of the council member, I believe, who will be joining with me. And it is worthwhile to come out, there's a lot of great informations. And our staff will be there to answer any question you may have as well. And last one is, I'd like to make a proclamation declaring March as a National Sunshine Month. What that is, is declare government transparency month. So that's my proclamations for the month of March. Okay. And that, that is it for the Mayor's message. All right, so we have a few presentations here in the room. And I would like to recognize, business recognitions for Sam's Club. Are they here, Sam's Club? The recipient for Sam's Club, are they here? Nope. All right, so if the recipient of Sam's Club is not here, I'll go ahead and move to the next one. For business recognition is TJ Maxx. Are they here? No? Okay, all right. So the next one I have here is the recognitions for an Eagle Scout for Marcus Castro. Is he in the room? He is. Okay, great. All right, all right. So Marcus Castro is a Fountain Valley High School senior, and he has earned the rank of Eagle Scout on October 2nd, 2024. Marcus has held several leadership position throughout his time in the scout, including senior patrol leaders. Marcus has also completed several high adventure activities, including submitting New Mexico's mountain baldy and whitewater rafting. After graduations, Marcus intends to pursue a career as a physical therapist. Wow, that's great. Well, congratulations, Marco, and to earning your Eagle Scout title. And I'm sure there's a lot of work, a lot of dedications, a lot of sweat, probably a lot of fun and a lot of cries at the same time. And congratulations. All right, so along with my colleague, I would like to come up and receive your certificate of recognition, please. Along with my colleague, please join me. All right, Marcus. All right, so the City of Fountain recognized your outstanding leadership, dedications, and community service. Your achievement exemplified the value of Boy Scout and set a remarkable standard for others to follow. Again, congratulations on your achievement. Thank you. All right, let's come here.
Have that bring his parents up too.
Let's take one with him first, and then we'll take one with the parents. All right, stay. Pass, please, come join.
Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Marcus, if you'd like to say a few words in the microphone and the voice. If you'd like to say a few words.
I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that has supported me in this community. It wouldn't have been possible without a lot of help from the city itself and the schools. Thank you.
All right, I got a question for you. So Mark, you mentioned you went on the Philmont backpacking trip. I did that with my Eagle Scout son. I have to ask you, how many miles was that, one hike?
I went twice. The first time was around 50, and the second time was around 70.
That's awesome. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Well, Marcus, hold on, hold on. You think you're done, but you're not. All right. You also received a certificate of merit from the County of Orange Supervisor Janet Nguyen. So I'm here, am I here to represent this? I guess her representative is not here. So I'm going to head and read you what has been noted here for you. As distinguished himself by completing the requirement for the Eagle Scout Award, the highest rank conferred by scouting America. In order to receive this award, he has attained the rank of Scout, Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, and Life, all while fulfilling the requirement of earning at least 21 merit badges. Wow. Volunteering within his community and participating in significant leadership roles within his respective unit, which validate the breach of acknowledged and experience he has attained. This certificate of merit honor their perseverance he has demonstrated in his conduct and efforts as a scout, his commitment to his unit and community, and towards our great state. He is to be commended for his outstanding achievement in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. I Supervisor Janet Nguyen congratulate him upon his singularly distinctive honor and eagerly look forward to how he will impact our world well into the future. Once again, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. City Clerk, is there any requests?
There's one more presentation.
Oh, that's right. You're right. Okay, that's right. All right, so I have one more presentation for the Rotary Club. All right. Who is, oh, we have all the retainers. Would you please come up and receive a check from the former city, for the state of the city?
So last week it was the State of the City. And this is a check that we have, you know, the city have decided to donate to the Fountain Valley Rotary Club for all the great work that you do. And I'm here to present a check of $14,000 after all the expense has been paid. And this is a check hopefully will donate to the Rotary Club to continue the great work that you've been doing over the years. And of course, we also have my colleague here, Vice Mayor, is also the president of the Rotary Club this year. And I believe everyone here is a past president, except Bowie. It's to be determined.
Oh, Dave Osborne, please come in.
No, it's okay.
Dave has little sympathy as he takes every dish. Come on, everybody squeeze together, pretend like you like each other. Councilmembers?
Yes, Councilmember, come on.
There, now it's filling in, all right. There you go, get straight. What's that?
Just a straight.
Yes.
Yeah. Straight, ready, everybody?
Yes.
All right, ready, one, two, three. Run it. But it looks like Kalanis when you say it. Next, you do one more, this one, this one. Ready? Hold it straight, Gary. I'm just teasing. There we go. Good job, guys. Congratulations.
The Rotary Charitable Association certainly appreciates the opportunity to be the benefactor of this year's event. It was a great event. Everybody, I hope that if you guys didn't attend it behind me, it was just absolutely outstanding. The city did a great job in orchestrating it and staging it, and it was probably one of the best events in the city this year. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much, Gary, for the feedback, for the comments. A lot of hard work was done by our City Manager Maggie Lee. Please give a round of applause for her and her staff. All right, we can move on to unscheduled matter only. Mr. City Clerk, is there any request to speak?
We have a few requests to speak. Just so everybody is aware, it's, you have three minutes to speak. And because these are unscheduled matters, the City Council cannot comment on anything that is said. With that, our first speaker is Mayor Beth Goldsby.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. City Clerk. Mayor Beth, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bowie and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. First, let me acknowledge how happy I am that you've enacted the sober living ordinance and that they are being evaluated on a case-by-case basis. I applaud the efforts on these. That being said, please note that I believe further improvements or enhancements to the ordinance may be in order. As you're aware, our neighborhood in particular, Stardust, is a mecca for these homes. At one point, we had as many as approximately 12 within our service area, which spans from Garfield to Ellis between Newland and Magnolia. This is unacceptable to us, and not only to our neighborhood, but any neighborhood. A limit needs to be placed on the number of homes allowed. I understand the intent of the law was to allow people access to safe areas to live while they get sober. We all know there are many well-run homes that adhere to the spirit of the law. However, the majority of these homes are money grabs. It's truly a disservice, not only to the community, but to the individuals who are lured under false pretenses to these homes. I not only ask you, but beg you to be vigilant in fighting these homes, vigilant in efforts to amend the ordinance to limit the number of homes, vigilant in your efforts to persuade California's lawmakers to change or amend its laws. Please do not be afraid to fight against what is wrong, even if what is wrong was adopted with the best intentions. I challenge you all to evaluate why you were elected to City Council. Was it to keep Fountain Valley a nice place to live? Was it to help make the city money? Was it for photo opportunities? Or does it look good on your resume? I truly believe that each and every one of you had Fountain Valley's best interests at heart when you ran for election. I also believe that the sober living issue took many of you by surprise, as it did your constituents. But regardless, it's up to you to make the appropriate changes to ensure Fountain Valley is a nice place to live. Please don't be afraid of lawsuits. Do make a decision to be leaders. We depend on it. This is where the rubber hits the road. I implore you to do what's right. We have legislators willing and readily working on this issue. Please reach out to Lori Davies, Diane Dixon, and Katrina Foley. They encouraged me to come here and implore you to not be afraid to work with Special Counsel Cy Everett in fighting this issue. Thank you for your time.
Bill Martin. With all the clapping, people can't hear their names. Bill Martin?
All right, welcome, Bill.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I'm glad I had the opportunity. I have the great misfortune of living next to a sober residence. And I can tell you that it is very difficult on my family. It's destroying our lives, it's destroying our city, it's destroying our neighborhood. And I understand you've passed this ordinance, and we waited patiently. We spoke with Omar constantly, waiting for the grace period to expire on this ordinance. But that's come and gone now for a few days. And, you know, we don't really see anything, and now most of the city's not responding. We understand there's 83 of these in the city right now. And I can tell you from the experience we've had over the last year, it will destroy the city. You need to take action now to save this city, or you're gonna have to carve in next to a nice place to live used to be a nice place to live. Because it's destroying our retirement, our home value. It's unsafe to live there. Our grandchildren are afraid to come and visit us. We have documented it inside and out. We have video cameras that can prove there's nine to 10 adult men from out of state living in this home. There's 35, 40, eight days go by, you get a whole new crew. You have no idea who they are, where they came from, what their background is, if they're truly getting medical help, or if they're not getting medical help. We don't believe there is any medical help being administered here, but that's our opinion. But we are willing to testify to what we've seen. And we certainly are willing to fight. And I'm urging you to fight now, because this city will be destroyed by this cancer that's metastasizing through the city. Thank you.
Ronnie Guerrero.
They couldn't hear you because they were clapping. Yeah.
Ronnie Guerrero. I understand everybody's in support, but we're trying to move this along. Everybody needs to get their time.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Ronnie Guerrero. I wasn't really planning to speak tonight either. I'm speaking on behalf of the sober living homes in the area of Orange County. I'm sharing, I'm here to share that I am a success story of sober living. I ended a 27-year career of institutions, all the way to federal, and I got my life in order through the help of sober livings. I do understand that there's some that aren't in compliance with what the rules and regulations are of the city. But there is some very awesome sober livings that do provide medical, along with mental health diagnosis. And they're really doing what it takes to help a person make a positive transition back into society. I have no more probation, no more supervision. And my goal now is to continue being that positive role model to the others and hold them accountable for the ones that aren't doing what they need to do. I have done some several things in the city. My role model is my uncle, who was, got an actual pardon from Governor, the Governor when he was in office, Jerry Brown, and also a very supportive person of Jody Barber, who is a great friend of mine, who is awesome, and has helped me in several areas of my life. And I've also utilized my talent, in which we are now implementing this in a lot of these people that are staying in these sober livings, to find their talent and utilize it for the communities. I'm an artist, and I've painted several murals and created several designs that I do have in here from different counties and different, even federal. I've done signs, banners, window paintings, patches, logos for the Sheriff's Department. I've done juvenile intervention programs. I'm a motivational speaker for Operation Safe House, and the list goes on. I'm one who is just standing up for the ones who are really serious about really trying to get their lives in order. I do understand that the community is very optimistic on who is coming into these communities. But as all this is going on, the sober livings are really hunkering down on certain rules and regulations. And we're trying to be a part of the community and doing things for the community in hopes that we could make a bigger difference and show that we want to be a part of the community. And I think that's important, because if somebody is coming in from somewhere that no one knows where they're coming from, it's hard to trust them, or it's hard to even know their background or any of that. But I'm here standing just to say, I've received medical. I'm getting my smile back. I'm gonna get my teeth, my teeth back. I'm gonna get a smile again. I'm healthy. I go to the gym every day. And I'm in intensive outpatient program, therapy, awesome counseling.
Ronnie, your time is up.
So, thank you for letting me share.
George Callis.
All right, George, welcome.
George Callis, right?
Correct.
First of all, thank you, City Council, for your hard work. I know everybody's been speaking about this on all these different terms, but I just want to talk economics, okay? This is big business, big business. They get $10,000, $12,000 a month grant on this. They're 600 feet apart from each other. And we're a suburbs, we're a city of suburbs. So my economics I'm gonna talk about is less kids, less state money, more of these sober living homes, less business, restaurants, et cetera, because they're in-house, they don't have any money to go out and do that stuff. Third is our home values are going down. We all bought into this, into this city for the schools and raising our families. I've been living here since 1988 in Greenberg off Magnolia. We currently have two that I know of. And once word gets out, obviously already has, we're gonna see more and more of this in our city. We already have ADUs, okay, taking more parking spots, more, more people, you know, more street noise, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a win-win for the sober living homes, okay? And I also want to bring up that, who pays for all this? We do, through our insurance companies. You know, I don't understand why all these beach cities, it's super expensive to live here as it is, why aren't they out farther? And if they are, then that means there are a ton of them in this state. And I realize that you're burdened with the state mandate, okay? But I just, I want to just emphasize the economics of it all. It's a win-win for these sober living homes. It's a win-win for these, for the people that lease out the homes to that. And what are the sober, what are those businesses giving up? They're not giving up anything at all. Fountain Valley's, Fountain Valley's giving up everything, okay? And we're also losing suburbia. I mean, let's just, let's face it. It's, the city has changed. I know people have already talked about that, and I just want to emphasize that as well, okay? So I just wanted to just emphasize the economics of it all, how Fountain Valley is losing, and these other ones are making big, big money. Thank you very much.
How Aine.
Hi, my name is How Aine. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I live about three houses down from the new sober home that we just moved in, maybe, I would say, six, seven months ago. At first, we didn't know who it was. All of a sudden, we see a lot of people just coming in and out. And first we thought it was a drug house, and then we started watching it. And within a week, we counted about approximately 30 different individuals coming in, out, in, out of the house. And then the street that we were on, it's a small street, so they're constantly, people being picked up and dropped off, and they would just park right in the middle of the street and waiting. And it's like constantly. And it is only, I can't remember how many feet from the park. So my daughter would be afraid to walk to the park because during the day, a group of two or three people would just stand outside and talking. So that really affected the whole neighborhood. And it's, and it's, and I received a lot of, a lot of complaint with my neighbors asking about that. And, and, and I just don't think that that location is the right place for, for, for the sober living home. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Ben Nielsen. Ben Nielsen?
Can't hear you back there, I'm getting old. Well, it's interesting to be back, guys. Back in 2023, I came before you, and I reminded you of what was going on in Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. That was in early part of 2023. In 2000, January of 2024, with the help of Councilman Harper, you finally dealt with the issue and you passed the ordinance. That was a year later. Now we have a year of waiting time. When we passed the ordinance, there were approximately 35 sober living houses in Fountain Valley. Today, we have 83 or more, according to your planning director. The thing is completely out of control. Tonight, I presented you a list of questions that was put together by a citizen group that's been, that's been formed to speak up on this matter. I hope this is the start... I hope this is the start for a good discussion at Mayor Bowie's town hall. If we get these questions answered, we'll go a long way, so people know what's going on. And we're not here in any way to cause, to any despair on any of the families that have sober living patients here. There are very good-running sober living houses, but there are a lot of bad ones. Just an example, only twenty-five, I believe, filed for a permit out of the eighty-three. The eighty-three basically told the city, forget it. We don't, we're not gonna file, okay? It's time for the city to step up, enforce your rules that are on the ones that applied, the ones that got the permits, make sure they do what they're supposed to do, and come down hard on the ones that haven't applied for permit or are operating illegally. Most of the ones that got permits are the ones that are operating respectful. They're respectful of the community. I went to a hearing the other day. It was a lady's sober living house. The neighbors were fine with that, but they have two other ones that are problems. So I just hope you'll step up. I know there's always a chance of a lawsuit. As Mayor Grandis at the time said during the last election, you have twenty-five million dollar reserve. Spend a million dollars and get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thea Stein.
Hi, good evening, council. I wasn't planning on talking about sober living, but I was approached by a member, and I have a personal experience that I'd like to just mention. We've lived in the city of Fountain Valley almost thirty years, long time, and I never knew there was such a thing as a sober living home until several years ago when we had an incident where we heard a lot of commotion and a woman screaming down the street. Then later, we walked out and we saw police and paramedics and a whole group of neighbors around this home. I still didn't know what was happening, but this person obviously was having some kind of a crisis, perhaps, you know, a drug overdose or something like that is what I can only assume. It was very scary for us. This was late in the evening, but not that late that I was still awake and that my husband was awake. And we still, at that point, did not know that this home, which is just across the street, a couple of houses from us, was considered a sober living house. The only reason I found out that that's what it was was about maybe a month or two ago when I received three letters within a couple of weeks for three homes in our tract, in our neighborhood, very close to us, that were on the sober living permit list. So I'm just very shocked that this has gone on and this happened to us because it was a sober living home. And I'm sure there are some that are run very well, some that are not, but I would also like to express my concern for safety for not only myself, but our neighbors, the children. We live near a school. Kids are walking and riding their bikes and being dropped off every single day to school. And, you know, I can understand the concern for having a place for people who are in recovery, but I also want to ensure that Fountain Valley continues to be a nice place to live, a safe place to live, and that the city council does the right thing. And I appreciate you listening and sharing my concern. Thank you.
Amana Sidai. Amana?
Good evening. Thank you for all your service for the city of Fountain Valley. I also didn't intend on speaking, but I do want to echo a lot of the concerns from my local people of Fountain Valley. I do live right next door to a sober living home. The home I lived in is my in-laws', and we've been residents of Fountain Valley since nineteen eighty-two. And I have to say, it really has changed our dynamics. Where I live is at the end of the cul-de-sac, so the sober living home is right next door. The amount of speeding that happens down my street, I have my six-year-old with me. I don't feel comfortable with her playing outside. The foul language, the smoking. We had a total of four overdoses, which means drugs are happening in the home, right? So in the middle of the day, the ambulants are coming, and that's how we found out it was a sober living home. We were really upset with our neighbor that bought the house, renovated it, thought her family was gonna live there, but instead, now I'm stuck with every ninety days, a new batch of people coming in. The, I want to echo about the cars coming at all times of the day, picking up, dropping off. They have no etiquette or morale of being good neighbors. The mother of the home also keeps changing, so we can't even approach them to see, all right, these are our concerns. We just text message, and I'm not allowed to text message my neighbor anymore because I get really upset, so my husband does it. They're driving on our lawns. They're sitting outside. It's just not safe. And we don't feel comfortable with our daughter playing basketball because of the amount of speed that they've come. They have no regard. I know at the end of my street, there's another one for males, and then on the other cul-de-sac, there's one. So in my neighborhood, which is on Brookhurst and Ellis, we have, at least that I know of, three. I know down the street, there's an elderly care home, and we have no problem. They seem to follow the rules. I just don't like the fact that I didn't know. I had to get an extension on my home, and I had to get my neighbors to sign off on adding five feet. But yet, when my neighbor decides to run a business out of her home, I have no, no communication. So I really do hope you take the ordinance seriously and start implementing it, and looking forward to the town hall on April third. Thank you.
Tracy Schlotterbeck.
Is that Tracy?
Yes, correct.
Okay, my name is Tracy Schlotterbeck. I am a mother of four amazing children, ages two, six, sixteen, and eighteen, and I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Fountain Valley and the surrounding cities. I will preface this by saying that I have two homes on my street, less than six hundred feet apart, which I just became aware of that law this week. And I think that they are actually, I will commend them as much as possible for being probably very well-run in the grand scheme of things. So I don't want to take that away. I think they are well-run. That being said, these are still things that we have encountered. We have one directly across the street and one about six doors down. Vans at extremely high speeds, vans with loud vulgar music, vans honking for residents to come outside easily half a dozen times a day, setting off my dogs, waking up my kids, smoking around the clock, unpredictable dogs that come, because I guess this is a dog-friendly one. So unpredictable dogs that are various levels of being trained, coming and going constantly. Cars parked on a lawn, which is a great look. Trash that cannot seem to make it inside the trashcans, and obviously trucks that don't pick it up if it's not inside the trashcan. This is basic stuff, guys, including a mattress that we had to look at for many weeks. Scary loud fights, police presence that we never had before on easily a half dozen occasions. And I have never been so concerned about accidentally leaving my purse in the car. A couple of weeks ago, this is from the well-run one, crying woman on the porch begging to be let back into the house after screaming match that I witnessed out front. Are these places doing important work? Yes, and I do commend the success story that came here today, probably knowing that he's up against a lot of conflict on the matter. Are they doing important work? Yes. Does it need to be in my neighborhood, under the noses of my four children? No. I don't know who to call to report issues. We don't know what the actual rules are or where to find those specific rules. Just if I were a business owner, I am a business owner, and I would want the opportunity to know if there was something shady going on at my business, and I wouldn't even know who to call before having to escalate it to the police. Enlisting the pros and cons of, for the taxpayers of Fountain Valley, we are at an overall loss for the neighborhoods and for the future of our neighborhoods. I was in a unique situation to move into the home that my family owned before me, and I would love to feel happy and feel good about passing this home on to my kids. And I, on the path that we're at, I don't know if I would feel good about that. Neighbors that we love have moved out of the neighborhood, from their homes that they were in for fifty years. Original owners have moved out because they were right next door. And whenever a for-sale sign goes up, we're just not excited about who might be moving in because we know that more likely than not, it's not, not gonna be great.
Tracy, your time is up.
Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Shawna Strabling.
Good evening, Mayor Bowie and City Council. I got interested in this because nobody seemed to be talking about it, and I went to the sober living house because I got a notice I was within a thousand feet. Then I decided to start paying a little more attention, and I went to three days worth of hearings. I don't know if any, you know, if none of you have gone to the hearings, you need to go to the hearings and listen to these people that live next to these places. It's atrocious. I've had, I've made a list. I had people PM me addresses of suspected sober living homes and their addresses. I've collected forty-one addresses and a few stories with those. There are kids getting followed by these people, the residents, grandmothers that are afraid to take out their grandkids to play, single father of three girls who, the girls have to walk by a sober living, three sober living houses, digging up, one, he's a retired fire captain. He realized there was a sober living because there was a guy digging up his stash of drugs in his neighbor's front yard. So they're stashing drugs throughout the neighborhood, and, you know, maybe kids or animals will find that. The drug dealers know where these homes are, and they'll make deliveries, or they'll meet them at the parks, and they congregate in the parks. There's only supposed to be six people living in these homes with a twenty-four-seven house manager. And a lot of these, I've heard a lot of people say there's fourteen. One of the houses has nineteen. One of the houses has a lockbox on the house, and they can't even tell how many people live there, but they know that there are bunk beds in the garage, and you're not supposed to be living in the garage. And all of this is supposed to be controlled by two code enforcements. Now, I called Josh a couple of days ago about a house that's on the next street over because it's a four-bedroom, and they've been renovating it like crazy for four weeks since they bought it. And I'm very concerned that it's gonna turn into a sober living house. And I called Josh and said, hey, I've been seeing plywood and everything go in and out. Do they have a permit? And I caught him today at the house, and I asked, you know, I said, how many, how many of you guys are there? And he said, two. I go, so you're getting called on building permits along with who knows what other permits? And now you're supposed to manage this? We need another code enforcement person. Really, if we're gonna really handle this, this is not new. Newport Beach and Costa Mesa have been dealing with this for fifteen years.
Shawna, your time is up.
Okay. Nobody benefits from a poorly-run sober living home except the greedy owners that are collecting a ton of money.
I have no further requests to speak.
Do you want the list? I got a copy for each of you.
Yeah, Mr. City Clerk. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, all the residents that come out and speak on this matter. Obviously, as our city clerk mentioned earlier, because it is an unscheduled matter, therefore, we cannot comment on it or respond to any of your questions. However, I encourage you to all come to our next town hall meeting, which is once again on April third. And we have made some accommodations on the time because some of the residents asked to do it later in the evening, so that way everyone is able to attend. So that's why we made the accommodations between from six PM to eight PM on April third at the recreational center town hall meeting. So I encourage everyone to come out. And of all the comments that everyone have made tonight, I have jogged down those comments. I've saw some of my colleagues writing that as well. So we will give you an answer at that time because it is a public meeting. It is scheduled. Therefore, we will be able to respond and comment to all your point that you have raised tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, if I may. So I would like to thank you, everyone, for your tonight, you know, being here for tonight. And also want to thank, actually, former Mayor Ben Nielsen for his input as well. All right, Councilmember Constance.
Sure. So Maggie's our city manager and Colin's our attorney for the city. And I think due to the fact that we had several speakers, and, you know, a lot of them are still here, probably people watching at home, is it okay that somebody announce the phone number for the code enforcement? And then we do have a page on the city's website about our ordinance. Can we announce what that is at this point?
That, I'm not sure, because it's an unscheduled matter. I'm not sure if you...
Well, this is information. We're not discussing the matter.
I just want to make sure that we don't violate anything. So I want to let you, the city attorney, to wait in, and if you think that we can, please do so.
We can. It would be a brief staff comment, but I believe the code enforcement number is on the website. So anybody can go on the website and just Google "code enforcement." I think the code enforcement line will come up.
And there is a page about the sober living group living homes ordinance, because I've seen it.
Right.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So for those who are not familiar, where is the recreational center is at? I'm gonna go ahead and give you the address. It is one, one-six-four-zero-on-Broker Street. That's the recreational center that's going to be, we're going to have the sober living and group home town hall meeting on April third. Once again, thank you, everyone, and we look forward to see you on April third.
Brookhurst and Hile. The entrance is Brookhurst and Hile.
All right, all right, thank you, everyone. And we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. It'll be a consent calendar. Item one, two, four will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless separate action or discussion is requested.
I move to approve items one through four.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, please vote.
Items one through four pass five-zero.
Thank you so much.
Can we ask the people in the lobby to please step outside?
All right, we're going to move to the public hearing, item number five. And the presentation will be by Matt Jenkins.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. AT&amp;T has filed an appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny conditional use permit nineteen thirty-three to install an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility on an existing Southern California Edison electrical tower. CUP nineteen thirty-three was reviewed at the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five planning commission meeting. After testimony from the public, the planning commission denied the project based on the inability to make the findings related to aesthetics for the facility. Staff recommends that the city council conduct this public hearing and consider the appeal filed by AT&amp;T regarding the planning commission's decision to deny the CUP for this location. The subject location is located at Southern California Edison easement on the west side of the city, north of Talbot, and east of Newland Avenue. Or Newland Street, I'm sorry. This is the approximate location on the eastern SCE Tower on the north side of Ellis Avenue, Talbert Avenue. So pursuant to the wireless ordinance, telecommunications facilities are allowed on open space zones such as the Edison property. And they're required to be set back at least 100 feet from residential uses unless the planning commission determines otherwise. Proposed elevations for the facility, the antennas will be located midway up on the SCE Tower with the equipment enclosure located on the base. If you see in these elevations, the proposed equipment enclosure is a little bit larger due to the sloping hillside. And the enclosure is required to have a level base with the base of the tower. And so they take the higher elevation. And so one side of this equipment enclosure is taller than the other, which is a little bit abnormal for these facilities. This site plan shows the location of the proposed facility and its setbacks to residential on the property line. So the equipment enclosure or the tower at the base is set back 53 feet to the east, to the property line wall, and 70 feet to the nearest house at 8618 El Cero Circle. This photo simulation looking north. And this is the same photo simulation viewing north. The applicant proposed some fake ivy to be installed on the block wall enclosure and provided one elevation showing this. So this was without the fake ivy. And this is showing with fake ivy to attempt to blend in the walled equipment enclosure with the surrounding landscape area. Again, this is looking southeast with no fake ivy on this elevation. And viewing north, antennas midway on the tower and the equipment enclosure at the base, but no fake ivy in this elevation. This slide shows the cell coverage in green for the tower. And the tower is located in the middle of the image on the left. The yellow area is the area with, without the cell coverage. And after the proposed facility, the coverage would increase with the increase in the green in the slide on the right. So AT&amp;T claims that the proposed facility meets, let me go back to slide 10 here. So AT&amp;T claims the proposed facility meets the city's development standards. Again, the facility is located in an open space zone where there's adequate space to be provided for the location. And the applicant has indicated that the project has been designed to minimize visual impacts. They also claim that the site is the best available and the best feasible location for the wireless facility after their analysis of the coverage area. AT&amp;T indicates that they have identified a significant gap in their service coverage area. And they provided the coverage map to show how the facility will cover, fill the coverage gap. AT&amp;T also pursued five alternative locations before their original CUP submittal. And the appeal indicated that AT&amp;T went back and further identified additional locations and provided an alternative site analysis with their appeal application. The analysis included alternative sites, including additional SCE Towers, for a total of 15 alternative sites. And AT&amp;T and the city were unable to identify any alternative sites. So AT&amp;T also claims that the approval of this facility is required under the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And the Telecommunications Act precludes state and local governments from taking action that would prohibit wireless communications. Staff provided an option to the applicant in the beginning to place the wireless equipment in underground vault at the base of the SCE Tower. But the applicant wasn't able to underground the utilities in this location. And SCE has indicated that they prohibit undergrounding any wireless communications under their towers. So the proposed above-ground equipment enclosure is proposed on this slope. And as we previously indicated, due to the slope and the requirement to conceal the wireless equipment, this creates a taller wall on the east side facing the residence on the east side and on the north and the south sides of the equipment enclosure wall, making this a larger enclosure than typically seen for a facility underneath the SCE Tower. So the appellant indicates that the Telecommunications Act prohibits unreasonable discrimination amongst wireless service providers when staff is reviewing applications. And in support of their argument, AT&amp;T noted that the city has approved similar facilities at SCE Towers in the utility easement. And they provided three facilities that we have approved. And they indicated that two facilities only have partially concealed equipment and that one has a chain link fence enclosure. And I provided three pictures of those locations that are under SCE Towers that were approved by the city. The one to the left is off Ellis Avenue, was approved with the CUP in 2009 with a six-foot tall block wall, again, with a flat grade in the park area. The one in the middle was approved with an administrative wireless permit. Again, the grade being flat and the wall being a little over six feet tall in that location. And then the one at Fulton Park was approved in 2007. It is 53 feet set back to residential, I'm sorry, 115 feet set back to residential and 400 feet set back from the school, the one on Fulton Park on the right, which is elevated up on a hill. But again, it's 115 feet from residential. And this wall, the wall height of that enclosure is roughly six feet, a little over six feet tall. While these three approved sites are similar to the proposed site with visible antennas attached to the tower and an equipment enclosure at the base, the proposed facility had a much taller enclosure and a much wider enclosure, adding to that visual presence. The SCE Tower is located adjacent to Ellis and Slater, located as the same grade as residential properties with their six-foot wall enclosure, which is a similar size of maximum height for walls in the residential R1 zone that borders these locations where a six-foot high maximum height is the maximum height for a wall. And the maximum height for the block wall enclosure is six feet. So there's similarity in the wall heights in these locations. So the AT&amp;T appellant indicates that this facility would be more camouflaged than the existing facilities in the city and that the equipment would appear as a landscaping feature below the tower. And the applicant only provided one photo simulation with their proposed equipment enclosure, showing this fake ivy to support their claim that it would not detract from the aesthetics and it would be more visually appealing than the other facilities. Staff did not concur with the applicant. And as indicated, the planning commission approved Resolution 24-12, which was actually a resolution denying the conditional use permit at its January meeting. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Jenkins, for the report. I have a question for you. When you say the applicant show three similar facility that is on Ellis, Slater, and Fulton Park, and they also claim it's a six-feet similarity wall as well? But the distance between those facility to adjacent to the residential, are there more than 100 feet or at least 100 feet and above?
These three facilities?
Yes.
Two are, two of the facilities are less than 100 feet.
Okay, all right, so thank you. So my next question, this will be our senior attorney. So we have an ordinance that is, requires 100 feet separations from the tower, from the tower to the residence. And ordinance require 100 feet separation. So to, according to Matt, so he's saying that there's two that is less than 100 feet. So how, is there any legal challenge for us to deny this applicant, you know, claiming that he has less than 100 feet? Well, we have ordinance that require 100 feet, but the two we approved didn't have that 100 feet.
So I believe two on here were approved before we passed our ordinance. And I'm not sure if those two overlap. So I guess I would have to ask the senior planner. Are the two that were approved within 100 feet approved both before our new ordinance was adopted?
I think one was approved before the ordinance. However, it is not a blanket restriction that wireless is prohibited from being within 100 feet. That they can be within 100 feet if they are approved with a conditional use permit by the planning commission. So there is that exception.
So looking site-specific, the planning commission determined, based on the facts of the specific case, that though it was within 100 feet, it didn't impact the welfare in such a way that they would deny the CUP.
Okay, all right, I'll go ahead and open the room for my other colleagues. If you want to chime in?
Yes.
Go ahead, councilmember.
Matt, the graphic with Slater in the middle, what year was that one approved?
The Slater one, that was the most recent one, approved in 2021.
Well, this thing is a monstrosity and it's very, very... It's not aesthetically pleasing. Are they going to start making these aesthetically pleasing? There's got to be something in the work. These things are bad.
For the sites under the SCE Towers, we've pushed the wireless providers to add landscaping or to dress them up. Troubling thing is the antennas that are attached to the tower, there's not much you can do with that. And then the equipment at the base, other than locating the equipment behind the enclosure, there's not much that they've proposed that's different from what we see here. Again, we've asked for this location to see if the applicant can underground their equipment. But as the applicant and SCE has told us, they do not want vaults underneath their, underneath their towers. So they're left to propose above-ground, basically trash enclosure-looking facilities.
So how long has AT&amp;T been providing service, cell service to our city?
To my knowledge, since the cell towers started being constructed in the mid to late 90s. From my research knowledge of Fountain Valley.
So this is basically just to increase the coverage?
That's what they've indicated, yes.
It's not a must?
That would be left up to the applicant, but it is, they did provide a propagation map, the green map, that it shows that the site is adding additional coverage in the area. I would assume, if you see the light gray squares, I think that is where there is at minimal cell coverage being provided. So where there's no green and then there becomes green shows additional coverage for this, being provided by this facility.
It's not a huge area.
All right.
Thank you.
I want to clarify to councilmember Constantine questions. When you say this facility is monstrosity, are you referring to the three existing? Or you reference to the one that's proposing? Because the one that's proposing has a, they're proposing with a fake ivy.
They're all monstrosities.
Okay, so I guess she's trying to, councilmember is trying to say is the one that we already approved. Is there where we could ask them to bring up to a more aesthetic pleasing? That's what she, I guess that's her question is.
Well, that's not on the agenda.
Right, but I think that's what you're trying to say, right?
Technology needs to improve, that's what I understand.
All right, I want to share with the clarification on that. All right, Vice Mayor, can you?
Yeah, just quick before we open for public hearing, is a representative from the applicant in the chambers? Okay, just wanted to verify. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any further discussion? All right, hearing done, I'll go ahead and open for public discussion. The city clerk, do we have any?
We have one, one request to speak, Thea Stein.
Thank you, Mayor Bowie. Thank you, councilmembers. Councilmember Constantine, I agree that they are monstrosities and they're terrible. Even with the fake ivy, they're not fooling anyone with that fake landscaping. It still looks terrible. It's very close to homes in the track. And I was notified by a letter that this was going to be on the agenda. I would encourage the city council to deny approving this. Homeowners did not want this. It does not improve coverage by very much. And it's very close to the Fulton Park Tower. These are both within, I'm not sure the distance, but anyone that lives in that track is affected by both of those. And it's horrible. It doesn't improve technology to very many people. In fact, I read in the description that there is a motor that will be running morning and night. I'm assuming it's going to be audible, disturbing people who sleep and disturbing people who are sensitive to noise. And I personally would not recommend anyone wanting to live near this. Having the Edison Towers there, you know, we have no choice. And adding this additional huge, you know, wireless facility to just give it a tiny area of coverage. They're saying that there's still areas in void of north and south. So are they going to ask for more? Is this going to continue, you know, in the whole area, in the city of Fountain Valley, in our neighborhood especially? Because that map affects where I live. And I really would love to know how each one of you feel about having this wireless tower addition, you know, being put here. I would like to know each one of you how you feel about this. Because as a citizen, I do not want this. I would encourage you to agree with the denial by the planning and development research and to also deny the appeal from AT&amp;T to put the wireless facility. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Stein.
Okay, sure, first of all, do we have any more public comment?
I have no other requests to speak.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Stein, I'm just curious, is the tower visible from your home?
I have a single-story home a few blocks away. And I walk the neighborhood, I'm near that location pretty much every day, and I can see it. Yeah.
Okay.
From my home, probably not. Have you ever? We can see the tower.
Of course, you can see the tower.
Yeah. And we can see the Fulton Park from our home. So there's already one there, yeah.
I'm just curious, is it the antennas up on the tower itself? Or is it the wall that's concerning you, or both?
Probably both. Probably both, absolutely.
So those antennas that are, I mean, you're talking two large towers there and you have antennas halfway up. I mean, it's already a monstrosity there. Is that really that much different having those cell towers half, a third of the way up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. I wouldn't, I would not want to continue, you know, living there. I wouldn't really want these types of technology wireless unmanned towers put anywhere else, you know.
Is it the, the visual or is it the fact that it's cellular waves, that kind of thing?
It's both.
Okay.
Yeah, the cellular waves, also the noise from, I'm sure, the equipment.
That's true.
Yeah, that's huge. And, you know, the additional cellular coverage is not that huge. But we're going to be probably hit with, you know, additional frequencies and other, you know, things that we can't predict, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to also, can I add something? I wanted to also thank Lyle, I think it's Shipple, Shipple Lee? I'm not sure how to pronounce his name.
Shepley.
Shepley. He wrote a very detailed letter, and I agree with everything that he is saying about.
All right.
The decision, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you for your feedback. All right, since we don't have any more public comment, I'm going to close the public comment. Do we have any other questions? Vice Mayor, can you?
Yeah, I think, you know, just to bring balance to the discussion, and this is an important one for the city. I'd like to hear from the applicant to kind of give them an opportunity to, to speak and, and ask. I'd like to ask a few questions after that.
My name is Greg Macias with Smart Link on top, on behalf of AT&amp;T. And good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, council members. Did you have any questions? I think we just were asking to respectfully reverse the denial. Aaron Schenk had provided a letter that covers all of the basis for it. One thing I did want to note as far as the noise, we do decibel studies, noise studies, and it's, it's far less than, than what people think. So, and we provide those, we do a lot of studies with emissions. It's, 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 all of these are submitted when we go through the CUP process, which we've already done.
So a couple of questions on the FCC NEPA compliance. I, I'm presuming that you went through SCE's Carrier Solutions, worked with Adam Swirro and archaeology and got all the cultural resources. Were there any issues? What I'm thinking about is, you know, there, there could be some cultural issues in the area. There used to be a courageous ranch, you know, farm. How, how are all the, you know, anything with, with Shipbo or any cultural resources? Just wanted to verify that with you.
We go through that on, on all sites. More, more Riverside County, we have a lot more cultural. I'm not exactly sure, I can, I can look it up for this one. I don't believe there were any cultural issues that came up. But we did definitely, we follow all of SCE's requirements, NEPA's requirements, and all the other agencies.
Yeah. I, I think this is a case where, where the, where the site demographic or the site topography really is a key factor. You know, I, I've been privileged to work on over 3,000 wireless sites since the mid 90s, going back to 2G. And SCE developed this whole Carrier Solutions for colocations. I mean, really, it's a, it's, it's an opportunity to put equipment on, on, you know, basically an existing structure. But, but I also understand how this has kind of reached this point. Planning Commission, and I feel the same way, I think Planning Commission has got it right. That these towers are elevated, they're, they're in a, they have a visual impact in the APE, the area of potential effect. It's significant. And I think, I think what, you know, what staff is asking for is alternatives. And it, it sounded like there were some alternatives, but I also wanted to just give you a chance to say how you, how you basically looked at other opportunities and, and what, why you're still insisting on this location.
Well, it's for the gap in coverage, and it's a significant gap in coverage. I believe that the propagation maps that they've provided, you know, that they, that proves that. We did also provide up to now, I believe it's 15 other alternative sites. You know, this tower's already there, all we're doing is putting the antennas on it. You know, like you said, SCE is a great resource now, because you don't have to build another tower. I mean, if you imagine having to build a freestanding tower in that location, what the, what the, the folks in the area would, would have as far as their objections are. You know, this is an existing tower, so this is kind of the least obtrusive, I would believe.
I just wanted to give you a chance to, you know, argue your case and field some questions for my colleagues, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, anybody else? Councilmember Grenas?
So the one thing I'm concerned about is the generator. So are there generators on the existing sites, the other three sites that were listed? I don't know, Matt, if you can answer that or?
I believe so, but if not, yeah.
Let me go back to the slide here. I believe there's a generator on the middle slide, 8676 Slater. That's why the, that's why the enclosure is much larger, the other two. There may be one at the Fulton Park. But I know, because of the one on Ellis on the left, I just recently took that picture about a week ago, and there is no generator there. And, yeah.
I'm just curious, because I, I've been by the one on Slater many times, never heard anything, so I wasn't sure if there was one there or not. So just gone through my notes. How, how tall is the wall? I'm sorry, I know you said that, but, no, no, it's six foot is the other ones. What, what is this one being proposed at?
So the proposed wall here, the proposed wall would be eight feet tall surrounding.
Two feet extra.
Two feet extra, so think of like an eight foot tall trash enclosure, if you will. However, on the east side, due to the slope, sloping conditions, that wall height would be more than eight feet, probably be 12 or more feet on the east side facing, facing the residential. I don't have a cursor.
Have we heard anything from the residents who live next to it? Have there been any complaints or concerns from the residents who were directly affected?
No complaints or?
Not even at the planning commission meeting?
No, Lyle Chappell did speak and we received.
I watched the meeting, so yeah, I understand, okay. And Mr. Chappell, or Shepley was, you know, he, he had an issue with Harper Park. And the reason they had an issue and we asked them to take that down at Harper Park is because it was in the middle of a park. This is not in the middle of a park, this is kind of a, what do you call it? Green belt, you know, that is underneath the towers. There's no park in this area, right?
Correct.
There's no swings, there's no equipment?
It's actually, yeah, right here is a hillside and ice plant.
Okay. If, in, in Harper Park, they also have a, one of those fake trees that is a cell tower. And I remember in 2016, when that was brought before, before I was on council, we had a room full of people complaining about the tree. Now, if you look at it, nobody even knows that tree is there. I mean, it's, it's, it blends in really well. I know there aren't other trees here, so it would probably stick out. Could you put a tree there, like one of the fake trees? I know it's more expensive, but, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
SCE does not allow any kind of steffing on their, on their transmission towers.
I, I'm not asking about putting it on the tower, I'm talking about separate tree, yeah.
A freestanding?
Correct.
I mean, in theory.
Sorry, I believe the standard for outside of a transmission line is 20 feet, so they could probably put it 20 feet outside of the, the cell tower.
But that would put it closer to the homes.
Yes. Unless they moved it, yeah, unless they found a different location.
Would it, would your company be willing to, instead of doing green ivory, maybe do a beautiful mural of some sort?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that part of it's a little bit easier.
Because I have, I have no issue with the, the antennas on a third of the way up. I mean, it's a bunch of metal, it's not blocking views. The problem that we had in Harper Park is, was also blocking the view of the park of neighbors, supposedly.
Yeah, we've done, we've done like city water tanks where it says, "Welcome to the city," or, you know, different, different things like that.
Mm-hmm. And then a question for our city attorney. I know there was concern over the cell waves, I, I don't know what you call that. My understanding is that we're not allowed to take that into consideration?
That's correct, we, we do not consider RF emissions by federal law.
By federal law, we can't even consider that. So I just want to make sure that's clear, because I understand that's a concern. I, I actually have, I don't have a problem with this. You know, to me, if it's not in a park, it's, no direct neighbors are complaining. We could beautify it and make it even look nicer by putting a mural. You sound, you sound like you're willing to do that. Technology has changed over the years, we have 5G now. So, you know, what was available and, and the number of users now compared to in the past. So yes, technology changes, and the requirement, I think, is there. I don't have, and, and we've already allowed this in other areas. Like how do we, how do we go, how do we tell this gentleman that we allow it at Slater, we allow it at Fulton, we allow it in other areas, but we're not going to allow him to do it here where there's a need? And it doesn't have, I mean, if it was in a park, I'd say no way, you know, same thing as before. But that's, that's not the case, so that's kind of my thoughts here.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council member?
So the resident or residents that live near there, and there was one address that was on here on one of the slides, we don't know what the resident is feeling. We don't know if the resident saw the letter from the city, and we have no idea. So that's an open assumption at this point, and you're talking a mural.
If you lived next door to the tower, heading this, you, you have a view of a huge tower. I mean, I, I don't think the neighbor's going to have an issue with it.
So to put a mural on the wall, are we not seeing everything above the wall, or is that just on my slide?
Sorry?
There's a tower here.
The tower goes way above.
Yes, I understand, so putting a mural, you still see all the tower.
Well, you can't block the tower, that's there.
Yeah, but this is really.
All right.
The issue is the wall, not the tower, the tower is existing, that's not going anywhere.
No, it's, okay, all right. Anybody else, council member?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay, my question's for the Mr. Applicant. Actually, I prefer what the applicant proposed, which is the fake Ivy over the mural art. Because I see the mural art tomorrow, could be someone else graffiti on it. And people don't do graffiti, I mean, it's more likely not graffiti on plants, even though it's.
I'm good with that too.
So I, I, that, you know, I, I prefer the, what you have proposed there. You mentioned about the small level decibel, but you didn't give us a, a point. What is that number of the decibel that you're referring to?
I mean, I'm not exactly sure if we've done a study for this site, but we could if we had to. But most of them are all passing, the ones that we have, the ones that we have done.
Okay.
Within, within the ordinance of the city.
All right, and you also, to my colleague, Vice Mayor, can you brought some very good point reference to, you know, give you the opportunity to speak, why, if you have, look at other locations, and you said this was the best gap locations. So what is that percentage of the gap locations? Because also aside, when you go out, you have actually a machine and you test it out, what they call a dead spot, to find out what is the percentage of dead spot versus the locations that you say you looked at it. What is the percentage on this one versus another one you have looked at?
I mean, the propagation maps show what RF has seen, if we need to get more technical, I mean, I'd have to refer to them to get a little bit more clear number for you, if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
The only reason why I say that would be helpful, so, you know, perhaps the other location that is, it's actually more, at least 100 feet up beyond to residential, if it's only a 5% different gap, maybe we could work with that, right?
But it's not always just the, the, the coverage area. It could be that the landlord wasn't interested, or, I mean, I'd have to look at every single, you know, every single viable candidate that we had. But a lot of times it isn't just coverage area, it's, it's, it could be setbacks, it could be, you know, a lot of, it could be the, it's not in the correct zone. You know, we, we try to find the right zones, but open space is, you know, it's, it's a clear, clear good zone to be in.
Okay, so, so that tells me it's, I'm not sure if, if this is urgent for you or not. I'd like to see some data coming back, but this is the only thing that I, I want our city attorney to clarify. My only concern is although the other three we have approved in the past that is less than 100 feet, but it sounds to me that it was done prior to an ordinance set in place. But now, now we have an ordinance requiring at least 100 feet separations. And if we are approving this, that means we're not following our ordinance 100 feet. So that also set precedent case for futures, you know, applicants say, well, that's not 100 feet, but you approve another one that's less than 100 feet. So I'm not sure how that's going to be challenged down the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I look like Omar's can respond.
If I, if I may, just for clarity, the code says that the city's intent is not to have them within 100 feet of residential, but you can apply for a conditional use permit to place it within 100 feet. So placing it within 100 feet requires that CUP. I believe there was one that was, one, one of those examples Matt gave was a few years ago, like three years ago, so that was within the new, the updated ordinance. The others were not, so just to clarify that. The, we had also worked with the applicant, they originally applied, I believe, for the Sprout Shopping Center, it was pretty close to residential. Planning Commission had asked them to move it more central to the, to the shopping center, so it wasn't as close to residential, because that was within 100 feet as well. And then at some point, they stopped pursuing that with the, I believe they said that the negotiations broke down or the landlord didn't want to continue with it, and so that kind of broke off. But there are, there are other opportunities, we saw other opportunities for private properties to accommodate the site, but those fell through for whatever reasons.
Okay, thank you so much, Omar, for that.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, Kostas?
So I think we need to think of why this matters before us. What specifically did the planning commission say? Why did they officially deny this request? Please?
The, the planning, in order to approve a wireless facility, the planning commission is required to make findings, and they were unable to make findings based on visual impact screening and steffing that the facility wasn't able to achieve those three. The visual impact being that the larger than normal equipment enclosure at the base of the tower and the proximity to the residential. That screening being a larger larger wall than usual for these type of facilities. And again, the steffing, steffing requires that facilities be designed to the minimalist amount possible, such as the mono pines, the fake trees that you see. But in reality, steffing a facility on an SCE tower is challenging.
I say thank you.
Does the wall actually have to be that tall? I mean, what if some equipment was showing versus that tall of a wall?
And then if equipment was showing, our code requires the equipment to be screened, so that would not.
We can't put.
Code requirement.
Any kind of greenery or fake greenery over that part of it, I'm just asking, so.
Any options for screening?
Yeah, the design wise, yes, I mean, we could, we could do that if it, you know, if that'll help. But a lot of times, like the mayor said, it's just the graffiti, the different, you know, the different resources in the area. I mean, if you want us to have some sort of other design, we could maybe propose that with, with the screening on top.
To my communications with SCE, they do not permit live landscaping that would provide, or that would require irrigation and so forth. They do not require that. And so it was, the fake Ivy was their.
Yeah, I remember that from last time, you were not allowed to put anything live anywhere near it, so it's understandable.
And then I've also ventured with roof structures to, there are similar little dog houses that are out there, but I think SCE won't approve any more roof structures anymore. So they want it to be open, like a trash enclosure, similar.
Yeah, again, to me, the big issue is the tower, but the tower's not going anywhere. Adding this is not a big deal.
All right, any further discussion? Councilmember Harper?
Matt, can you come back, I have a couple of questions. So with the, the.
So with the, the applicant listed about 15 new locations that they, or alternate locations that they looked at, one of them was Beach Point Church, it's, which is probably number 14.
That's correct. Yes, I did provide a map showing the alternative locations, 14, they.
So 14, it said that they couldn't, because there was some sort of height restriction. What exactly is the height restriction there?
Hmm. Beach Point Church is zoned for residential, and so the maximum height would be 50 feet tall.
And how, how tall would this need to be?
How tall would it need to be? That would be up to AT&amp;T, but most wireless, freestanding wireless facilities are at 50 feet or taller, so.
Okay, but 50 would potentially, I mean, if there were a variance, then it may not be, it could be zero. So there might fit in the 50 feet, or if it's 60 feet, maybe, you know, maybe it's 60 feet, you know, it's not, not a large variance. And then the second is number seven, the Fulton Park, I guess. So they said that there was some 500-foot setback rule that wouldn't let them co-locate at Fulton Park. Are you, are you familiar with that?
That requirement is for brand-new freestanding facilities.
Okay, so theoretically, there is something also, already at Fulton Park, number seven, the co-location could potentially be a option?
I'm trying to look up number seven.
Yeah, it's number seven. It says, more intrusive than proposed facility, and then it says a wireless communication facility here would violate the 500-foot freestanding structure setback. So I guess that's if they built an entirely new facility, but I don't know why they couldn't co-locate. I mean, co-locating's sort of a, that's the idea.
I'm just curious, what, if they did in Fulton, what's the, it's the same issue, right?
Fulton Park is.
No, it's, it's already existing. They're, they're on the right, there's something.
Oh, I see what you're saying. This, the enclosure's already there.
The enclosure and, and they would just, I, I assume they just put their antenna on.
I, I understand what you're saying, no? Okay. The difference is, the, of the new one would have to have an enclosure. Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to clarify, you couldn't co-locate in the struc, the ground structure, so you'd have to build a new ground-mounted equipment enclosure. So you can't, you can co-locate on a tower, but you can't co-locate your equipment inside an enclosure.
Okay, but, so they build an extra enclosure? I mean, what, there's already enclosure there. I, I don't know. I guess that may be a little less intrusive than building an entirely new one.
Well, the picture on the right just shows one tower, it doesn't show the second SCE tower there, so.
Well, so you could, I guess theoretically, put it on the second tower that doesn't have an enclosure? Is that what you're saying?
That would be.
You'd have to build the enclosure there.
Or.
Yeah, but at least, at least it's already in, already in enclosure there and it's flat. You know, I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's better or not. But the Beach Point, I guess, seems, seems like that would be the, the best of all possible, or it's on a private, private property. I'm sure Beach Point probably could use the extra rental income, and you put a monopine or something there. If it's, you know, I don't know how much, more than 50 feet you'd need there, but that would be the idea. At this point, I mean, I, I've heard all the, you know, the, the discussion, I, I, I don't, I don't feel like I can, I don't feel ready to overrule the planning commission, so at this point, I would uphold their, their ruling, but I think there may be some other alternatives that could work.
All right. Councilmember Constable, you want to say something?
So is this 50 feet? What is the height of this? I'm still trying to find it. Because at one page, it talks about 50-foot monopine proposed by AT&amp;T, but it said this item was continued at the applicant's request, and the applicant has since withdrawn their application.
That was for an alternative site that the applicant was searching for.
Hmm.
To this map, AT&amp;T, as Omar indicated, AT&amp;T was proposing a site where Sprouts' location is, Dutch Brothers.
Sure.
That shopping center. They proposed a monopine in the rear of the property. However, there was neighbor opposition and AT&amp;T and the landlord ceased negotiations after that.
Sure, thank you.
So I have a question for you, too, Matt. You, you mentioned, I think staff's recommendation was to decline this, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and what was staff's reasoning to decline it? It just the, the proximity to, to the neighbors?
Pro, proximity to the neighbors and the visual impact.
And the screening. So there is, I think, multiple factors here. You see that there's the visual impact, screening, the distance to the, the residential. We had let them know before or right when they applied that, you know, this would be something, we wanted to keep the 100-foot separation as much as possible, but they wanted to move forward. I don't know if they can, you know, they can't put that equipment underground directly underneath that structure, but can they go further out? I don't think they've really explored that. I think there are other private properties that they could have explored further, but they gave up on. But I think the, the findings that the planning commission made here were sufficient. But we had pushed them to, to look at other locations and to, you know, try to stay away as much as possible from, from the residential areas, as the goal of the code is.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Our hearing done. We'll go ahead and, you want to make a motion? Do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve alternative number one, and I think it would be good to see if they could find an alternate location.
Okay. So we have a motions to approve alternate number one. Do we have a second?
And just, just to confirm, alternative number one is to deny the appeal, or to uphold the planning commissions?
Yes.
All right. So we have.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motions on the floor and a second.
Actually, I want to make one more comment. I, I, I agree. If, if there's other alternatives, I would encourage you to come back with other alternatives, and then let's look at this again, potentially.
Yep. I also like to make a little comment before I vote. I also do agree that the applicant should consider any other, you know, locations. And there was not a lot of, you know, there was some missing informations as well of ask. So, all right, let's vote. We have a motion on the floor and second by Councilmember Harper.
Item number five passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. Okay. The next item for the night is administrative, administrative items. Presentation by Rick Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item was continued from the last meeting. I believe the issue at hand was under Recreation and Community Services, an item that was previously on the legislative platform to support legislation that promotes inclusion and equality to obtaining public education. Since that point, I've had a chance to speak with Rob, who unfortunately is not here again tonight. He's at a, a conference, but his opinion, that item, it does not have a specific relation to the mission and vision of the Community Services Department, as it relates specifically to public education as opposed to community services. He had no issue with us withdrawing it from the legislative platform. So at this point, we've removed it from the legislative platform and didn't hear any other issues, so I, at this point, if you have any questions.
Okay. Happy to answer them. Any questions for my colleague? Nope? Okay. Actually, I do have, the one I like to see is, I noticed that he, the, to Councilmember Harper concerned last time, that has been removed. But on one thing, I'd like to add one, and to oppose legislation imposing hardship on our resident businesses and/or developers, reference to resolutions 1111 and 1121. And I think you all received, especially the legislative committee.
Those are presented by SCA QMD.
That's correct.
Regards to switching out all gas utilities within a home, like your water heater, oven, things of that nature, replacing them with electric.
And, and it's not just switch, it's a mandate, so.
Yes.
So.
It would require the replacement.
Correct.
On all homes.
So if we could add that to the legislative platform, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would, I'd be in support of that. I think it's.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right.
I, I actually, bringing it on last second, I, I want time to research it.
Okay, so in that case.
We could certainly, I could bring the issue to the committee.
Okay.
Discuss it and then bring it back to city council.
So we can approve the platform as it is now and then add that, you know, discuss that later.
That, that's fine with me.
All right, great. All right, thank you so much. All right. I guess we're going to, is any public, any public comment on this, Mrs. City Clerk?
I have no, I have no request for public comment.
All right, okay. So we have, do we have a motions on the floor?
I'll move item six.
Okay.
I'll move item six.
Okay. Vice Mayor, put a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right. Motion by Vice, Vice Mayor Conine, and second by Councilmember Constable. Please vote.
Item number six passes 5-0.
All right. Moving to the next item is annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Presentations by our finance director, Ryan Smith.
All right. Good evening again, mayor and council. This item tonight is a quick review of our last fiscal year that ended in June 30th, 2024. So our 2324 audit had been completed, and we had an audit that began roughly in October of last year, and it, we just completed through our, our audit, and our financial report was completed here in February. As part of the audit, we also had a GAN limit review, and our GAN limit is our, our legally allowable appropriations limit, how much we're able to appropriate as a city, which, just as a side note, it's about 180 million, and our appropriations that are, that are, that go against that, we have at about 60 million, so we're nowhere near our appropriations limit. We also have, usually have a, a single audit, and that's an audit on our federal funds, and that's required if the city spends more than $750,000 of federal funds. This fiscal year, 2324, city only spent about 360,000 of federal funds, so we weren't required to have a single audit this year. And then the culmination of all our audits is the annual comprehensive financial report, our 2324 ACFR. So last year, our total net position, which, the net position is, is basically a fancy way of saying net assets, is 203.9 million. That's a 22.6 million increase. Our net position in governmental activities, this includes our general fund and special revenue funds, was an 18.4 million increase. And then our net position of business-type activities, and this would include our water, sewer, and solid waste funds, and that was 14, or 4.2 million dollar increase. Our citywide revenues were 117 million, which was an 8.6 million dollar increase, and our citywide expenditures was 95.6 million, a 15 million dollar increase. The total general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year was 80.1 million, which was a 6 million dollar increase over the prior year. So looking at the governmental funds, the combined total fund balance of all our governmental funds, which includes general fund and our special revenue funds, is 107 million point, 107.4 million, which was a 5.5 million dollar decrease. The general fund balance was 80.1 million, which was an 8.6 million decrease. Note, I, I just said it was a 6 million dollar increase. So part of that, 14.6 million of that, was a, an adjustment that we made for a GASP pronouncement that required us to move our internal service funds out of the general fund and into their own business-type activity funds. So 14.6 million of those funds were moved out of the general fund. So once we removed those, we had 83 million dollars in revenues and 77 million in expenditures, so the difference there was a 6 million dollar increase to the general fund.
Yeah, I have a question. So in, so you're saying that internal service funds, which we've previously reported as part of the general fund.
Right.
Are now being required to be reported separately?
Separately, yep. So we report them separately now as their own individual, oh, we report them together as an internal service funds, but yes, they're reported separately as a business-type activity now.
But, but are we going to combine them when we sort of say, what is our fund balance? Because they're, they're kind of, even though they're, I don't know, GASP different, there's no, they're legal, they're like all part of the same.
Right, yeah, they're, they're all part of this. When I, a couple of slides ago, when I said the, the total net position of the city, they're included in that. So they're part of the total assets of the city.
Got it, okay.
So that, that didn't change. The 14 million is still part of the city.
So it's just a disclosure.
Just moved it out of one fund and moved it to their own, yeah. So it's just how we're reporting.
Okay.
And then our other governmental fund balance was 27.3 million, which was a 3 million dollar increase, and this includes our, our special revenue funds, debt service, and capital improvement funds. Our proprietary funds or our business funds, net position, the water utility fund had 38.7 million. This was a 3.3 million dollar increase. Our sewer fund was 16.3 million, which was just under a million dollar increase. Solid waste fund was 1.3 million, which was about 100,000 dollar increase, and the internal service funds were 17.1 million, which was a 2.6 million dollar increase. So the prior fiscal year, the city had submitted our annual financial report for review by the general, GFOA, and we received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from GFOA for the fiscal year, June 30th, 2023. And we've also submitted this most recent report for review as well. So with that, if council has any questions, I'm available for questions, and recommended action is just to receive and file the ACFR for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024.
All right. Thank you so much, Ryan, for the presentations. Any question for my colleague? All right. Hearing none. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I, I just want to make comment. Great job, Ryan. You've, you've really, since you've come on board, you've done such a tremendous job, your whole department, everything. As I mentioned before, our, our finances, we always had, there was questions and such, and we feel really confident in what you're doing, and I just want you to know, we appreciate you and your whole department.
Yeah, I got, I have a great team behind me and, and great leadership from Maggie and, and the council, so.
Thank you. Councilmember, greatness for your feedback. Anybody else? Nope. I just want to echo the same thing. You are definitely, you know, a great asset for the city for the work that you do. We want to thank you so much and your team, and, you know, look forward to upcoming budget, you know, for the updates.
You have to vote.
Thank you so much. All right. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
It's a receive and file item.
Oh, it's receive, oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Receive and file it. It is, okay.
Received.
Receive, it is.
And now filed.
I'm looking for the day that one council.
And we will receive and.
Pay no attention, you never saw it.
It's, it's asked me here, call for motion, so. All my papers is call for motion, so. All right. Okay. Do we have council member for future, future considerations? Anybody? Nope? All right. All right. Hearing none. Actually, I, I have one. If no one, I have one.
You know the strategic planning is coming up in two weeks, right? Just a reminder.
Yeah, but it's already deadline. We always send our requests, right? So especially, I think it echoes right after the presentation forum or finance director. So technically, realistically, we have, what, a 3 million dollar increase in the general fund, right? So which is a positive for the city. So I'm, want to see if, I have a second, if the city would allocate a hundred thousand dollars investing back into a community for Fountain Valley student wanting to continue on their future educations. So as you know, education, higher educations, you know, drive a community to reach by its community. And if there's an interest for that, if not, it's okay.
It's not city related, not city council related.
You mean like a scholarship fund?
That's right. When we allocate a hundred thousand dollars, it will set a scholarship from the city for students who wants to go to higher education, pursue their educations, and they can apply to the city for a scholarship.
And would you want that, I'm just curious, to go through like the community foundation or one of our nonprofits to monitor it?
Yes, that would be helpful. That will take out the staff time.
Council's interested, we'll bring it back to a study session and we'll take a look and see if that's a gift to public funds issue. You just have to find a public purpose. And I know that a lot of public agencies do do scholarship and grant type programs. So I'm guessing there will be a public purpose. I just, it's the first time the question's come up for me. So I would have to take a look.
I would want to understand better and maybe you bring it back is, what's the criteria? Like who, who can apply, how much, how many people?
Right, well, first of all, I think we just have to make sure that we can, we can do it as a government agency. That's the first hurdle. To my understanding, it can be done because I've seen other cities have done this for their community because at the end, the students that continue to higher educations, they will be continuing a resident of their prospective city. And if they have a high education, their income is higher, they're most likely be able to purchase home in the community and be a lifelong resident, continue a lifelong resident.
But I don't think the city should get involved with this. Is this a school district or some of our organizations within the city? I don't, it's a no for me. I don't think it's appropriate.
Of course, well, that's, you know, this is.
I, I, I guess what I would like to see, I'm not totally opposed to it. I, I would think there should be more of a description other than does the city want to give a hundred thousand dollars for scholarships? It's too nebulous.
So the city will give a hundred thousand, will allocate a hundred thousand dollars giving to a nonprofitization in the city, preferably the Fountain Valley Community Foundations. And as a vehicle to give scholarship for students that qualify. And the, the foundation will set the qualification and they will get some of the feedback from our council as a set of qualifications.
You can't. And what do you guys think?
I think in, in concept, it, it's an interesting idea. I think if we had some more details on who would be the, sort of the custodian of the funds and how that would be delivered. But, you know, I, I would support at least talking about it and kind of.
This is discussion. Yeah, I, I would be okay with it. I mean, I would, I would, I need like a billion more details.
Yeah, that's what we go through.
Just, just a thought, yeah, all right.
All right, all right, thank you.
Sorry, staff.
Who was the second on that?
Yeah, I'll be the second. All right, all right, City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Authority. Do we have any speaker for unscheduled matter? Mr. City Clerk, there you go. There's the unscheduled matter.
I don't have a slip, but I heard.
I would think it would be absolutely irresponsible of the city to have a scholarship. That's a complete waste of the city's funds. You're, you're building like electronic billboards to earn money for the city. And now you want to give that away, public funds, to somebody for, you know, that, that's not even prudent. I, I don't even have the words to say enough about this. That's irresponsible. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have no other request to speak.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. All right, City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, AB one two three. We'll go ahead and start to my left, Councilman Grandis, please.
Okay, Wednesday, March fifth, Courageous Elementary had the Read Across America. And I went and read to a fifth grade class and I read the book, The Big Cheese. And it was a lot of fun. It was a good learning lesson. You don't always have to be the big cheese.
No, I thought it was about cutting the cheese.
How do I? There we go, yeah. It was a very good message, until now. It was really good. The kids learned that you don't have to, you know, be braggadocious. You don't have to be, you know, you could go out and have some fun and not always finish in first kind of thing. It was a good message. Well received, had a lot of fun doing it. And I wore a really cool cheese hat, too, so. And then on Thursday, March sixth, the State of the City, I'm sure our mayor will talk more about that. On Monday, March tenth, attended the OCPA Board Meeting. This Friday, there's going to be a, from eight thirty to two o'clock, I believe it is, there's going to be a strategic planning session where we're going to talk, we do a three-year strategic planning with OCPA. So I'm looking forward to that. It's going to be very interesting. Tuesday, March eleventh, I attended the Fountain Valley Community Foundation Capital Campaign Meeting. That's to raise money for the Boys and Girls Club Expansion. And then also attended that night the Summer Fest Committee Meeting on Wednesday, March twelfth, Coastline Community College Foundation Board Meeting and the Orange County Sanitation District Administration Meeting. I'm the vice chair of that committee and was, as mentioned earlier, appointed to the ad hoc committee for audit, which I think is going to be very interesting. Thursday, March thirteenth, attended the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee Meeting in the morning. And then that evening, the Network at Night at Mountain Mike's Pizza. That, that's a really good pizza place. If you haven't checked that out in the Grocery Outlet Shopping Center, Brookhurst and Garfield. And I want to thank them in the chamber for that event. Fun. And then Saturday night, this coming Saturday night, is the Fountain Valley Women's Club Murder Mystery Night fundraiser. There are tickets still available. Yours truly is going to be performing and acting in that. So I encourage you all to show up and laugh at me because I will mess up and it's going to be fun. And, and there's a special surprise at the end. Even my wife doesn't know about it. That's going to happen at the end of that as well, where I will totally make a fool of myself. If you're interested in tickets, I believe their email is fountainvalleywomen'sclub@gmail.com or check their website. And that's my report.
All right, Councilmember Constity.
So I submitted my list already, but there were a few residents that did speak during public comments earlier. And our city's website is fountainvalley.gov. Code Enforcement's phone number is seven one four five nine three four 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 four. And the email address is codeenforcement@fountainvalley.gov. It's all together. And there you can get information and file an online complaint if you want to. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Jim Conine.
Thank you, Mayor. On March sixth, I attended the Annual State of the City Event at the Saigon Grand Center. This was an amazing production once again this year. Thank you to Mayor Bowie, City Manager Lee, and the tremendously talented city staff and vendors who really put this gathering, I would say, on the regional map as a key event to attend. Also, thank you to the twenty-five event sponsors, including gold sponsor Sirlounge, GST, Orange County Realtors, and Saigon Grand Center. My takeaway from this experience is that our city is indeed in a golden state and the future is very shiny bright for us. On March thirteenth, I attended with all my city councils, the Network Mixer at Mountain Mike's Pizza, hosted by Fountain Valley Chamber Commerce. This was my first time visiting this very nice pizza establishment where the service was great and the food delicious. And this morning, I led our Fountain Valley Rotary Club's annual Every Student Succeeding Breakfast, graciously held at the Fountain Valley School District Boardroom. It is so heartwarming to experience and celebrate the courageous efforts by ten selected students from each of our school sites. And thank you to Fountain Valley resident and Rotarian, past President Dave Osborne and his wife Mona, for the continuous generosity of student scholarships of five hundred dollars each. In fact, they have donated over eighty thousand dollars just to this event since it began sixteen years ago. And so we're so thankful for this benevolence and love our students for the support. And I also like to express my appreciation for those that attended the meeting tonight. I want to also call out and especially thank from our Fountain Valley Police Department, Officer Daniel Shaw, who's there in the corner. I feel extra safe with, with Officer Shaw here. So thank you for joining us and keeping us protected. That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Conine. Councilmember Harper.
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to thank all the people that came out to speak tonight. I know it's take time out of your day to come here and speak and definitely heard the comments, felt your concerns and feelings about, about silver living homes. And more to come at the Town Hall on April third. Should be a, a good and informative event. All right, so on March fifth through March seventh, I was in Sacramento attending the California Council of Governments Regional Forum, representing OCTA. It was basically a transportation conference and wanted to share a couple of items. There is a, there's a bill called SB three seventy-five, which requires regions in California to plan growth and achieve certain pollution reduction goals. And it was, it was passed, I can't remember when it was passed, but it was passed several years ago. And the, the pollution reduction goals were ambitious. And SCAG, which is the, basically the Southern California region, is in danger of not meeting the goals and could be cut off from transportation funding as a result of the goals. So SB three seventy-five, if it's, put it on your radar, we are trying to get a extension of time to meet those, meet those requirements. I've also heard from a couple of legislators up there, a couple of feedback items is, this is a tough year for the budget. So it's going to be really tough to get any money from California this year. And also, when they are, you know, considering it, but they have over two thousand bills to consider up in Sacramento, each legislator. And so it's, it's impossible to, it's very hard to keep track of all of them. And but one thing they said that they do look at is, they look at letters from cities, from organizations, who supports the bills, who opposes the bills, what are the comments? So the letters that we write as a city, that you write as individuals to our legislators, they make a difference. So if there's something that we feel strongly about, send them an email, send them a letter and could, could make the difference. Another thing they, we heard from CARB, which is the California Air Resources Board, they make a lot of pollution rules. Some feel, some think they're overly onerous, which is probably true in some cases. But they did mention the Carl Moyer Grant, which is what we used to in the Fire Department this year. It's about trading in new, old vehicles for newer, more environmentally friendly vehicles. As a reminder, our Fire Department got one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from the CARB Carl Moyer Grant. So it's something we may be able to use for, I don't know, public works vehicles or other vehicles that we're retiring. But the CARB people said, yeah, that's a good grant, so look at that one. On March tenth, attended the OCTA Board Meeting, March twelfth, the OCTA Finance Committee, March thirteenth, Fountain Valley Chamber Network at Night, Mountain Mike's Pizza. One thing I learned is that they have a buffet for twelve ninety-nine, includes a drink and pizza and salad. So it's, it's a pretty good deal, you know, especially if you've got teenage kids like I do, you know, you get your money's worth. And then yesterday, attended, here at City Hall, the St. Patrick's Day Lunch and Chili Cookoff. And I didn't, did we, who won? Who won? We didn't, I didn't see the email.
Heather, our risk manager, we have Kyle Hilton, and also I think Cassidy in Finance Department.
There were three entries, but I, I did, did you declare a winner or they all won?
Heather was first place. I think Cassidy was second and Kyle was third.
Okay.
I don't know how I remember that.
Which, which one was? What, what was Heather, one, two, or three? Oh, one, okay. So it was, so number one chili was a kind of a barbecue smoky flavored chili with, so it was very tasty, yes. So, nice job. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Harper, for the report. So I, I submitted my report to our City Clerk, but I want to touch on the State of the City. First, I want to thank you to all the sponsors, the guest speakers, Supervisor Janet Wynn for the update. And also want to thank you for the owner of the Saigon Grand Center, because they did an in-kind to our city, so that was really nice. And also want to thank my colleague for being there, except with the exception of Councilmember Harper, he was excused. So thank you for, for letting us know that you couldn't attend.
His better half was there.
Yeah, I said, I said my wife in her place.
The other, the better half, which is Miss Hang, she, Hang Harper was there, so thank you. And other than that, we are conclude for the meeting for tonight. The meeting is adjourned, adjourned until our next regular meeting, April, wow, April Fool, look at that. April Fool, who knows, some of us might not show up at six P M. All right, thank you so much, everyone, and have a good night. All right, thank you so much, everyone, and have a good night.